Actually, they may become bigger. Up and tries to make an entrance, she knows that, doesn't she?
Yeah.
Up and makes the entrance, it kind of goes up.
Yeah.
It's more potential for it is.
We're sort of hoping the police would kick him out.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's November 19th, 2024 City Council meeting. We would ask that you please silence all electronic devices. At this time, I want to ask that you please pray with me. Lord, as we come together this evening, we're so mindful of the time of year that's upon us and for all the many reasons, Lord, that we give thanks. Thanksgiving is a time to reflect, a time to reflect on our many blessings, our many friends, our good fortune, all both large and small. The blessing of democracy, Lord, where we recently witnessed a free and fair election, and we now begin the duty of a peaceful transfer of power within our country. How thankful we are, as we know, not all can say that. And, Lord, this is a time to reflect on the life-altering events in western North Carolina, and the blessing of countless volunteers descending upon those in need to provide a helping hand. Again, how very thankful we are. May we reflect on an opportunity to give thanks to the many people within our community that give time, energy, and financial resources to assist those in need through a myriad of nonprofits and community organizations. Now, as we prepare for the Thanksgiving holiday, Lord, may we truly comprehend the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. May we show others we come in contact with the power of thankfulness and our love for others. Thank you for the many blessings our city has been given. Thank you for our staff and those that work to make Burlington safe, clean, vibrant, healthy, and a fun place to live and work. Our prayer is that you continue to bless us with your grace, your mercy, and your love. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Next on the agenda this evening, we have two proclamations. Our first is GIS Day, November 20th, 2024. At this time, we'll recognize our GIS Administrator Andrew Shore. Andrew, I'm going to read the proclamation, then we're going to have Andrew give us an explanation. City of Burlington, North Carolina, proclamation recognizing GIS Day, November 20th, 2024. Whereas the City of Burlington recognizes that an understanding, use, and application of geospatial technology is crucial to operating our infrastructure, sustaining our natural resources, and stimulating economic growth, thus benefiting the welfare of the general public throughout the City of Burlington. And whereas geographic information systems, GIS technology allows us to see and model complex relationships and patterns to more intelligently respond. And whereas there is a need to promote GIS awareness, education, and technical training to use this rapidly developing technology to its full potential. And whereas the City of Burlington acknowledged those that have chosen GIS as their profession or as part of their discipline to improve the lives of our citizens. And whereas to recognize the support and support the efforts of nonprofits who work on activities to improve conservation, human services, and various humanitarian efforts to better our world. And whereas saving, having a day of GIS activities open to staff and government leaders will help promote GIS technology. And whereas the City of Burlington is committed to utilizing GIS to inform decisions, making and better serving its residents, and make useful geographic information open and easily available to the public as a platform for innovation. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Jim Butler, and the Burlington City Council do hereby proclaim Wednesday, November 20th, 2024, as GIS Day in the City of Burlington, and encourage everyone in the community to celebrate. Let's give these guys a round.
Evening, Mayor, Council. So GIS Day is more than just a national event. It's a global event since GIS is used around the world. And so we're just kind of celebrating some of the, kind of the accomplishments that we've, were able to, to make with GIS in the last several years. So I think it's been about five years since we celebrated one of these. So we've got a lot of, technologies continuously changing. We've got a lot of new apps that we're getting ready to roll out tomorrow with, with GIS Day.
Good. Good. I'm going to come down with some congratulations. Our next proclamation this evening is Small Business Saturday, which is November 30th, 2024. At this time, we'll recognize our downtown manager, Paige Shepherd. It's good to see you again. I want to read this proclamation. City of Burlington, North Carolina, proclamation recognizing Small Business Saturday, November 30th, 2024. Whereas the City of Burlington, North Carolina celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 34.7 million small businesses in the United States, and small businesses represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for 61.1% of net new jobs created since 1995, and small businesses employ 45.9% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas 68 cents of every dollar spent at a small business in the U.S. stays in the local economy, and every dollar spent at small businesses creates an additional 48 cents in local business activity as a result of employees in local businesses purchasing local goods and services. And whereas 59% of U.S. consumers are aware of Small Business Saturday, shopped or ate at a small independently-owned retailer or restaurant on Small Business Saturday, 2023. And whereas the City of Burlington, North Carolina supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Jim Butler, and the Burlington City Council hereby proclaim Saturday, November 30th, 2024, as Small Business Saturday in the City of Burlington. And we urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. So, congratulations.
Yes, I think that sums up the purpose of Small Business Saturday. But for downtown in particular, we are running specials. A lot of small businesses are doing open houses, sales promotions. And then to kind of highlight Small Business Saturday, we pair the downtown Christmas tree lighting with Small Business Saturday to kind of bring people downtown. The Christmas tree lighting is from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., but Small Business Saturday will be celebrated during regular business hours. And then as part of our downtown Christmas lighting, we will have live performances. Of course, we will have Santa Claus because children love Santa Claus. And there will also be a raffle for shoppers to enter to win downtown dollars. And for every $25 they spend, they can enter into the raffle for a chance to win. So I hope you all can join us.
Okay. Sounds like a plan. Our next item on the agenda is Code of Ethics disclosing any conflicts of interest. At this time, we'll recognize City Clerk Beverly Smith.
Members of council, it is my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning the Mount St. Jude Island.
None. Thank you. Our next item is the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye. Any opposed? Our agenda is adopted. The next item is our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item A, to approve the reclassification of the associate planner position pay grade 213 to a senior planner pay grade 214 in the planning department effective upon City Council approval. Item B, to approve budget amendment 2025-26 for the planning department to transfer funds from the old CDBG program income fund 052 to the new CDBG program income fund 553. Those are the two items requested on the consent agenda. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
So move.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye. Any opposed? Our consent agenda is approved. At this time, we'll move into our public hearings. We have three public hearings this evening, and we will give a brief explanation as we go through each one. During the public hearings, there will be a comment, a public comment period for anyone that would like to make comments on the specific item to do so at that point in time. So there will, each, each item will have its own public hearing. Item number one, a public hearing has been scheduled for City Council to consider request to amend the existing conditional business to include 104 Nice Drive. The property is currently zoned medium density residential or MDR. The property is located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Nice Drive and Shadow Brook Drive, addressed as 104 Nice Drive, consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 114086. At this time, we'll recognize our Executive Director of Planning and Development Services, Jamie Lawson. Welcome, Jamie.
Good evening, everyone. So in front of you tonight, which was also presented to you at the work session on November 4th, is a rezoning request to amend an existing conditional business zoning district. The property to the, so the area that is seeking to be amended to add to the existing conditional business is shown in Teal Hatch. The existing commercial business is the subject of Harris Teeter and that shopping center, to give you some orientation. The applicant has requested to, to add this parcel into the conditional business, and you'll see a rendering that went through the technical review committee for review and consideration. They did approve it on October 7th. As you're aware, the concept plans are required to be included as part of a conditional business rezoning. So you'll see that in a moment. The Planning and Zoning Commission also reviewed this case and approved it with a recommendation to City Council on October 28th. So this is what I was alluding to before. There are no changes to the overall area of the Harris Teeter shopping law, shopping center. What, what is being proposed is adding in this triangular piece to add an additional right out only access point to allow for better internal movement, circulation movement. And the plan also shows landscaping and other site improvements. So that's the extent of what the area that would be modified. The rest of the conditions from the 1985 conditional business rezoning are not changing. The, the language that's shown in yellow, access to, from parcel 114086 onto Shadow Brook Drive shall be limited to right out only, and parcel 114086 is to be included within the conditional business zoning amendment. Those are requested to be included as additional language within the ordinance. You have that ordinance in front of you. So I am here to answer any questions. Staff does recommend this rezoning, and the item has been properly noticed. The applicant is in the audience too, in case you have any questions for them.
Okay, just as a matter of recollection, a lot of this was preempted by some of the road improvements at South Church Street and Shadow Brook and University Drive. And basically, that, that preempted there to be some rework done on the rear of this property for access for trucks and things like that. And then we've worked with NC DOT on how that final layout meets their standards. And, and then obviously, working out through city staff and TRC, we get to the point where P&amp;Z approved it and staff's recommending it. Is that pretty much?
Yes. And also, just to note that NC DOT is also on the TR, the Technical Review Committee. So they reviewed it through the process as well.
Okay. Any questions from council to Jamie?
Jamie, if I'm not mistaken, then really what this does too, it significantly improves the entrance of trucks of delivering product to Harris Teeter, is it not?
So the, it will. This parcel is just including an exit. It won't be an entrance here, but there will be other improvements to the existing entrance in conjunction with the NC DOT required improvements.
If I'm not mistaken, this particular shopping center does not have a, a area behind it where vehicles can, can go down like many do now.
Right. It's a, it's a tough spot for loading and unloading. So this will help to alleviate some of the concerns, a lot of the concerns there.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Is there a residential property there in that area?
I think during the work session, it was explained that the actual, the petitioner actually owned that property.
That's correct.
So. So there, these conditional, this conditional rezoning is actually on their existing property. Any other questions? If not, this is a public hearing. So at this time, we will open the floor for public comments. Public comments, we're going to ask that you keep those to a three-minute mark, and our city clerk, Beverly Smith, will be putting the wonderful timer on. So, Mr. Fox, did you want to say a few words on this item before we proceed with the public hearing?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just briefly. My name is Mike Fox. I'm an attorney with an office that's at 400 Bellmead Street in Greensboro, North Carolina. I represent the applicant. Staff has done a great job. They've been wonderful to work with. And really, this, this was generated by an NC DOT project, which caused the driveways to have to be moved. Fortunately, my client, Corey Corporation, Richard Benore is here with me tonight. They happen to own that corner. And so we were able to move some parking and, and an access up there. We've met with the neighbors. We screened it. There's not going to be any access onto that court vehicular. It'll all just be onto the main road. And otherwise, it'll fit in with the rest of the, the development neighborhood. Nothing else will change. Happy to answer any other questions that the council may have.
The houses across the street will remain. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. And we're going to put an extensive landscaping buffer, like is already there, so that those folks will be shielded from the parking lots and the access.
Any questions for Mr. Fox?
Thank you very much.
Yep. So this is a public hearing. At this time, we'll proceed with public comments. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak? Yes, sir. Please come forward. Please, please come forward to the front here, if you would. And if you would state your name and address for our city clerk to put into the minutes. Thank you.
William Wilder, 212 Westford Place. This is about a cul-de-sac that's adjacent to the shopping center. I live on a cul-de-sac that's adjacent to the shopping center. And they're changing it from a residential cul-de-sac to a business, a cul-de-sac with a business on it. Okay. I raised my kids on this cul-de-sac, and I cannot imagine, two of my neighbors abut the shopping center. And I cannot imagine the effect that that would have if I had one of those lots was changed into a business. I am 100% against this. I think they need to figure out another way than changing residential cul-de-sacs that are part of the city into a business cul-de-sac. It's just, to me, it's a slippery slope. And pretty soon, in the next X number of years, we're going to have businesses in our residential area. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side would like to speak? Anyone on this side that would like to speak? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye. Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. Just for point of clarification, I think Councilmember Wall mentioned it, but the cul-de-sac, Mr. Fox, would you please step forward and clarify that? Cul-de-sac is not going to be part of this. How is that going to affect?
Correct. It may be helpful if you can pull the map back up. This would be the, it wouldn't extend any further. This would be the only thing that could happen. And I'll explain why. You see, in the, the, if you could, Jamie, please point out the, the lot.
Sure. Let me just do this. The lot.
So, yes, that's the lot right there. The existing subdivision, or the shopping center with the Harris Teeter is, is in the pink and the purple there.
Right.
There's no way that it can extend any further into the cul-de-sac. That's the only piece of property. And it's essentially shielded from the cul-de-sac by our buffering and screening. There will be no vehicular access from the shopping center onto the cul-de-sac. All the vehicles will have to go onto the shadow line right there. And essentially, folks will just see nice landscaping there. They won't even see the parking lot.
Yep. This is, the facility is not changing. This is not a, an extension of the facility.
Correct. Exactly. It's just a, it's, it's what we had to do to be able to make the parking work once, once DOT moved the access.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any questions for staff or for Mr. Fox on this item?
Let me ask a question there. If I understand, Mike, there really won't, I mean, there won't be any trucks, you know, coming out and into that cul-de-sac and coming over on the cattle.
Correct. There, there will not be any access on that cul-de-sac. That's not allowed. The only thing will be, it will be a, a buffer, a screen and a buffer there. So. And, and there's an existing house there which will be removed. And then that'll create the parking and the additional access out on the shadow line will come there, just the right out only. But there will be no traffic on that cul-de-sac from the, from the shopping center at all.
I've already heard you correctly.
And that's the house, I think.
Yes. Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Our public hearing is closed. If there's no other questions from council, at this time, we'll entertain a motion on the request for rezoning.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the request to amend an existing conditional business district, CB Unified Business District Development. The property is located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Nice Drive and Shadow Brook Drive, addressed as 104 Nice Drive, and consistent of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 114086. While the request is inconsistent with the future land use map in Section 4 Land Use of the Comprehensive Plan, and that it calls for this area to have suburban yet residential uses, the request is compatible with existing commercial uses in the area. The request seeks to improve existing circulation in the area. The action is reasonable and in the public interest, and that the comprehensive plan encourages a sustainable balance of land uses. The request is compatible with existing zoning and land uses in the area.
Thank you. So we have a motion to approve as it's inconsistent with the land use plan and, and to amend the land use plan as stated. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor, signify by aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That item is approved. Thank you, Mr. Fox. And Richard, appreciate you guys being here and working so hard with staff and DOT on this project. staff and DOT on this project. Item two, a public hearing has been scheduled for city council to consider a request to amend the existing planned development located on the east side of St. Mark's Church Road, north of Alamance Crossing Shopping Center, addressed as 1408 St. Mark's Church Road, Overcoat Loop, consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 106976. At this time, we'll recognize our Executive Director of Planning and Development Services, Jamie Lawson, once again.
Thank you again. So in front of you tonight is another amendment to a previously approved planned development. This came in front of you a little while ago, and the applicant's, property owners have changed, developer has changed, and as they have gone through the process, they requested to add six additional units to the overall development, which was previously approved for 205, so that would be a new count of 211. All of the, there is no change to the existing footprint that was approved as part of the planned development. The applicant was able to modify the floor plan of the existing development and get those additional units there. They also added in an additional fire lane that was required by the fire department, and have added in some sustainability incentives that our ordinance allows for. That is the extent of the amendments that are different, or an enhancement, if you will, from what was previously approved. The TRC approved this revision to the site plan in October. The Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval of it, and this item was presented to you at your November, earlier November, work session. I'm happy to answer any questions. Staff does recommend this rezoning request as per your consistency statement sheet. The applicant is also in the audience in case you have questions for them.
Okay. And Jamie, could you give us a real quick explanation of what planned development means in our UDA?
Sure. Planned development is a rezoning option. You are familiar with the conventional rezoning, the limited use rezoning options, and this is just the third option, where a developer, a property owner, can establish site-specific design standards, providing the most flexibility. They can look at different densities, different setbacks, really crafting the development standards to the site, while also establishing enhancements, ways to balance the flexibility are balanced by adding in additional enhancements, like extensions to greenways, or additional design standards, or higher caliber tree size. So it really depends on the site itself. Not all one planned development is the same. We have had commercial planned developments in the city, as well as residential planned developments. So this one is providing a number of incentives, connections to the park, additional greenway, various enhancements in terms of the architectural standards, to name a few.
And the request for the additional units, and then you mentioned fire lane, was the fire lane required by staff or?
It was required by the fire department. So there has been some modifications to the requirements for the code. When the application was originally approved, the second fire access was not required. The applicant has consented to that, as well as included some sustainability incentives as well.
Jamie, do you have a visual to give a show on the screen of the proposed design? Where it is now?
Included in, trying to think if I have it on here. I don't, it's not that far. There you are. Can you see that screen? Okay. So this is really, you know, as mentioned before, this is really conceptual, what's included as part of a planned development. So this shows, you know, the general layout of the development, as well as the greenway. This is part of the previously approved application, so the fire lane was added. You can see on the bottom right, there's a greenway, as well as a pedestrian connection to Alamance Crossing Shopping Center, that will allow for enhanced sidewalks and connectivity, as well as to the west.
Is there any connection, realizing that Davidson Park's on the west side, will there be any connection or sidewalk or trail that would lead from this particular area, this development to the park?
Yes, there's going to be, it's an extension of the sidewalk, so there'll be improvements to the crosswalk and the intersection here, sidewalk on the south side of the road, and then connection to the park on the north. I should also add that there will be no connection between the neighborhood to the north and this development.
And was that the same in the previous approval?
Correct. That has not changed.
Yes, well. Any other questions for Jamie? And did you say, does the petitioner want to speak? Is that what, did you say that or mention that?
I think only at your request.
Okay. All right, good. I feel the same way. Any other questions for Jamie? Okay, this item number two, this is a public hearing, so at this time, we will open the floor for any public comments. Again, public comments are limited to three minutes. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak on item two on the Is there anyone on this side that would like to speak on item two? Seeing no one, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion, close the public hearing.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our public hearing is closed. Any other thoughts or comments on this item? If not, we will entertain a motion from council. I think the motion is, the information is on your pink sheet.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the request to amend existing planned development. The property is located on the east side of St. Mark's Church Road, north of Alamance Crossing Shopping Center, addressed as 1408 St. Mark's Church Road, Overcoat Loop, and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 106976. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the Comprehensive Plan, in that the future land use plan, future land use map in Section 4 Land Use of the Comprehensive Plan calls for this area to have regional commercial. The request is compatible with the existing commercial uses and residential uses. The development includes the construction of a greenway, sidewalk extension to Joe Davidson Park, an urban space area, architecturally enhanced buildings, connectivity to Alamance Crossing, and a future bus shelter easement. The proposed plan complies with the adopted City of Berlin Greenway Plan and Bike Plan. This action is reasonable and in the public interest, in that the Comprehensive Plan calls for a mixture of uses, and the request is compatible with existing zoning and land use plans of the area.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve as consistent with the land use plan and stated. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Thank you. Thank you for being here this evening. Item three, a public hearing has been scheduled for city council to consider a request to rezone property addressed as 3949 Rural Retreat Road from medium-density residential, or MDR, to planned development, or PD. The property is located on the north side of Williams Mill Road and Rural Retreat Road, southwest of the intersection of Rural Retreat Road and University Drive, consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 106711. At this time, we'll recognize Jamie Lawson once again.
Okay. This is the final rezoning request for this evening. In front of you tonight is another planned development. This one has not gone to you previously. This is a brand-new planned development for a 29-acre parcel. You can see highlighted here in teal outline, the property fronts on Rural Retreat and also on Williams Mill Road. This did go through the Technical Review Committee and received approval initially in March. Then it went to the Planning and Zoning Commission. They did not recommend it in April. The revised plan went back to the Technical Review Committee. It was also approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission in October, was presented to you at the work session in November earlier this month. This map shows a conceptual layout of what the applicant is depicting. Again, this is a conceptual map that goes along with planned development applications, gives you an idea of the layout, you know, not exact, but a general layout of the building locations, the open space that they're proposing, and many of the other site improvements. There was a fire lane access added to the property over in the east southeastern portion of the site. This planned development also includes a multi-use path to extend across Rural Retreat, also to connect to the park. There's enhancements that have been provided by the applicant. There's a long laundry list included in the packet. This slide just summarizes essentially the difference between the old plan that they had submitted and the current plan that is in front of you tonight. So you can see changes to the number of units. They eliminated one of the buildings. As a result, the density of the site also was reduced. They have reduced the number of parking spaces associated with that. Total square footage was also reduced. They increased some of the buffer standards on the south and the west side, added additional tree save and preservation areas, reduced their impervious coverage, and because the other building was removed, you would essentially also get a reduction in the building lot coverage. At the bottom, there's a summary, as I mentioned, the reduction of the buildings, increased open space, buffering, reducing the number of buildings, and more information included in your packet associated with that. This is a rendering of what the building essentially would look like, with enhancements on the architectural side of things as well. I think that's the end of my slideshow. I know the applicant is here in the audience and is able to answer any questions. Staff is recommending this rezoning request. I failed to also mention an important piece. You'll see on the concept plan, there is a right-of-way dedication that's not designed. It's very conceptual, and this essentially would allow for an additional access point should the adjacent property be developed or that area be acquired to allow for access through to University Drive. But that is a commitment and enhancement that this applicant has added, but they are not required to construct that extension since it's off-site.
Right. But that's off of University Drive.
Right. The University Drive is right here, running parallel, but their property does not abut University Drive. So there's two or three additional parcels right along University that are privately held by other entities.
So where's the entrance on the front side?
Off of Williams Mill, down where I'm hovering.
That's the only ones, as it's, that's on that property?
Correct.
Can you share that entrance again? Everything about, I know there was a little bit of a redesign to meet fire code, is that right, Chief?
Yeah, there is, there are requirements for the number of access, for emergency access based on the residential units, as well as remoteness of those two points, and the original design did not have that. We worked with the applicant to add a fire access that Jamie can point to, that does provide a second, is difficult to get the remoteness required on this site, but we're satisfied with it.
Okay.
So where is it, Jamie?
It is right, sort of at the southeastern corner of the lot. I'm circling, circling around it now. Just not far from the property line. Can you see where that is? Okay.
And I would assume that with the frontage on University is that gets developed out, and then that easement is turned into some sort of ingress, egress, that would even further assist.
So how many units were we talking about?
It is a total of 275.
So 275, meaning that they're the only entrance and exit, is that what you pointed out?
Yes, sir.
So I think to be a little similar in size, we see those units on Bonner Bridge are very similar. Is that, they don't have backside access, they just have front side, is that right?
Jamie, the flow of traffic through the development, in terms of the five structures, in that case, is that a concept of, basically set for roadway width?
So, again, this is just a concept plan. Should the rezoning be approved, they would then come back through the Technical Review Committee with more detailed site plans, where we would actually have scaled dimensions. It's hard to see anything at this level. So this, this exact configuration could change slightly or could stay the same, but this is not the approved site plan.
So, just from a timeline standpoint, I think you mentioned in April, it went to P&amp;Z, and they did not request approval or recommend approval, and at that point in time, those listed concessions were then worked on? Is that?
The applicant, I took direction from the feedback that was provided at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and then resubmitted a revision which required, which reduced the number of buildings and all the differences that I showed.
And the 55-unit reduction.
Right. And then it required going back through, because there was a significant modification, required going back through TRC again.
So it's a pretty substantial adjustment based on feedback from the April P&amp;Z meeting, and then it came to P&amp;Z again in October and was recommended approval?
Correct.
Well, I certainly want to thank P&amp;Z members, but this had to take some time for this to make modifications.
And this entire project has taken a lot of time. I know, how long have we been working on this project from a staff perspective? I know, how long have we been working on this project from a staff perspective?
I can only estimate, but a few years? The applicant is telling me that. I think the improvements are in the better of the application, so I appreciate the applicant taking those comments into consideration and making modifications and working with us.
And, you know, as long as I've served on council, the one thing that is guaranteed is that vacant property is going to be developed at some point. It's just, at what level is it going to be developed, and can you get a project that is amenable to those that live in the area? So fortunately with our UDO, the Planned Development is a great way to kind of start the accommodations of all of these items. And then the vetting process through P&amp;Z obviously has gotten us a lot further down the road. Any other questions?
You know, just a comment and a question. I mean, it looks like they've exceeded a lot of requirements here, haven't they? You know, just repeatedly. I mean, you know, I guess, that's encouraging, that was good to see. And I have one question, Jamie. At the end of that, I think it were you had sent, I think after the TRC approved, it's sent on to Amanda Hodier. At the very last sentence, that we have completed the TIA, which I assume is a traffic impact in houses. And if they join the review by the city and DOT, it will be holding additional neighborhood meetings. Now, when, has that occurred? When will that occur? You know, I guess I'm wondering where that fits in.
Yeah, I would direct that question to the applicant.
Okay.
Would you want to address that?
Yes, we can address that here in our comments.
Okay, perfect, yep.
Because, the reason I bring it up, actually, I've had some comments about that, and it is the traffic, you know. You know, so, I mean, I don't know, it says, we don't, you know, TRC approved it, you know, but I guess it's subject to this and modifications that may be recommended as a result of the neighborhood meeting, is that a fair statement?
So TRC, like I mentioned before, this is a conceptual plan that goes along, it's essentially called a master plan. So you're looking at the map, you're looking at the narrative, you're looking at the overall big picture of the project. Given the amount of residential units and the traffic flow that would come out of this project, TIA was required. That, so the improvements that may come out of the recommendations from the TIA have yet to be determined specifically because that would occur at the time of the official TRC site plan review, which has not been, you know, in front of the TRC. It would wait until, we're not able to hear that until after the rezoning is approved.
Okay, okay. I'd still, I'd be glad to hear about that.
We will get that on record, for sure.
You know, the amazing thing about this is it shows, I had dark hair years ago. In the last 30 years, what has happened in this area. First of all, I think in the early 1990s, we went out and actually condemned property for Davidson Park. St. Mark's Church had been already there, that grew. Then obviously, the commercial development, significant residential development, this would be added on to, but I can talk to the lake, all that area. University Drive continues to be worked on and now with Church Circle, Highway 70 growth to the west. It's, I'm not sure of any part of our community that has seen this type of change over that period of time. It was, Davidson Park was literally in the country. So with the connection of University off 40, you can get Elon, the concept, you get into Church Street, if you want to go to the west, to Greensboro, come back in the city here this way. It's, it holds why, it appears to me, that residential development, along with the commercial development there now, does fit what we see now in today's society. Will be a little bit more traffic, yes. But, you know, it's just, it was just time that, when all this infrastructure got put in, we really knew at some point in time this development would come through.
Well, University was designed to handle traffic.
Right.
And it's, and even the University intersection at South Church is being renovated as we speak to prepare for future growth. This project, the traffic is going to feed to University. It's not going to feed into the neighborhood because there's nowhere to go. There's no, there's no endpoint. It's sort of sealed off right there from Rural Retreat. So a lot of planning has gone into understanding that vacant property all along University is going to be developed at some point. So, and you see it right now, over with the new restaurant that's finishing up, and then the new retail shops right beside it. So, yeah, it's going to continue to grow, for sure. Any other comments for Jamie? If not, this is a public hearing, so at this time, we will open the floor for public comments. And Ms. Hodier, would you...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to invite my client, Mr. Switzenbaum, to address you first, and then I'll have a few comments.
Mr. Switzenbaum, please come forward. Welcome this evening. If you could state your name and address for our city clerk.
Hi, I'm Sam Switzenbaum. I live in Philadelphia, home of the Liberty Bell, 76ers.
The Eagles.
I'm going to introduce you to Sycamore. We created this, it's unlike any other development in America. We own and design this as Sycamore. Baby boomers are selling their homes. They want to stay in the neighborhood, they don't want to walk up three stories. They want an elevator building, they want lifestyle building. We created Sycamore. This will be the third one, if we're lucky enough to get approved. We have one in Charlotte, we have one in Concord, and they've been amazingly successful. One of the appeals in every municipality we go to is we have no three-bedroom units. This is an adult-centric development without calling it an adult community. Because we don't cater to families, we don't have a playground, we don't have a sandbox. We have adult amenities which appeal to all spectrum of adults. It is a gated community, it is secure, the buildings are four-story elevator buildings, they're coded, you need a fob to get in. The fire department will have a fob, police department will have a fob. Security is a very big deal today, and so we provide that kind of security. The units are large, lots of windows, and it's actually a fun place to live. And if you wanted to see it, you could go to Concord, we just finished one, and it's 100% leased, and it's a lifestyle. And we're very pleased to have created it, and we own the plans, and we've been here two years, two years. And what's the name of the restaurant we had dinner at tonight? I'm getting to be a regular in town.
At the Rio.
I had pizza tonight. Last time I had a steak. But they, they know us now.
They love the area.
Look, the folks from Philadelphia are here again. Anyway, we're pleased to be here. I know after doing this for many, many years, not everybody will agree. Impossible. What I can promise you is what we will do will be first-class and will be accretive to your lovely city. I can promise you that. I can also promise you that we will have that entrance and the roundabout that goes out to University. I want it, Jimmy Collins wants it, so it's just a matter of reaching and understanding and getting it done. But I think it's better for the community, and we listen to the planning board, and we dramatically reduce the scope of the development so that we could fit in here. I'm here to answer, this is Christopher McGrath, who's the president of our company. He's the smart one. Anyway, I'm here to answer any questions, we're very transparent, and we greatly appreciate the opportunity that we've been afforded here. And Mr. Mayor, not to make you feel good, that prayer was nice. That was a nice touch, especially in today's world.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Switzenbaum or Mr. McGrath? Thank you. Ms...
I want to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
She wants to reach things into the record. Just real quick, appreciate the time. Amanda Hodier in 804 Green Valley Road, Suite 200 in Greensboro. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, property owner of record, and Mr. Switzenbaum and his company, who is the proposed developer. I want to first reciprocate what Ms. Lawson said about the process and working together. It's been great to work with staff and get to this point, and I'll say, I think, our understanding, and I think the city's understanding of how to utilize this PUD tool that you have in your toolbox and how to make the best use of it for a special piece of property like this, that is, you know, sort of a puzzle piece in the growth pattern of Burlington on a major corridor, has been really useful. And Ms. Lawson and her team's insights to help us use it to its full extent has gotten us here, in addition to the neighborhood meeting process. We had neighborhood meetings back in the spring, before we went to Planning and Zoning Commission the first time. We heard feedback there. We, of course, heard feedback at Planning and Zoning Commission from both the commission and neighbors. Took all that back, went back to the drawing board, as you heard, and then had another neighborhood meeting this fall, in September, to introduce those changes and explain and show how we had utilized that process and taken all that information into account with what you see before you. So I just wanted to speak briefly to a few of the elemental elements that are part of your rezoning analysis, reasonableness, compatibility, and consistency. So from a reasonableness standpoint, the PUD tool, I want to hark on that again, this was zoned MDR. We needed a little bit more density, but not HDR density. If we'd gone to HDR, that would have been over 700 units allowed. And we're not allowed to curtail that with conditions, there's not a mechanism for that. We knew that wasn't the right fit here. So we wanted to have a more narrowly tailored zoning request, and that's why we wanted to pursue the PUD so that we could get that right fit, but also so that we could show off this great plan and this great environment that Mr. Switzenbaum and his team have developed, and that we think is such a good fit here. The whole point of the PUD, or rather, the whole sort of balance of it, is to create enhancements and qualitative exceedings of the ordinance in order to create a plan that's more specific and more customized so that we can be sure that it fits, so that we can be sure there's compatibility and consistency with the area. So I'd submit to you that that's what we've accomplished with this PUD. We've got the units down well below what HDR would have required, over 500 less than that, than that number. We're at 275, as you've heard. And we've also got 60% open space, we've got internal walkability, not only amongst the site, but also to town. As has been mentioned, we have one of the most prominent commercial areas of your city just to the south of us. People already want to be in this part of the city. So we want to help them be here, help them live here, and get to those places they already want to be on foot or bike. So we've done that with the multi-use path that you see on the master plan. It also gets you over to Davidson Park, which was important to us. Again, placing people near the assets and the community infrastructure that you guys have already had the foresight to put in the city, and now that's what people want to use, that's what they want to live near. So that's what we're trying to do with this development, but also keep it compatible with the fact that we recognize we're on a transition. We're coming out of that commercial core and transitioning up to single-family. We've got townhomes across the street. So a well-thought-out, curtailed, I think appropriately scaled, multifamily community such as this fits nicely right into that line of transition as you come out of that commercial corridor into the single-family and put folks where they can experience all of that. Your land use plan consistency, it is reflected in your staff report, so I'll just lift that up. This meets your comprehensive plan in land use form, being compatible, or rather, in keeping with the suburban residential designated district here, but it also meets your objectives for housing diversity, housing availability, creating a mix of housing and a diversity of walkable neighborhoods, again, in parts of town where we know people want to be. Also want to lift up, as Mr. Ward mentioned, the numerous enhancements that this project offers, not only internal to future residents and perhaps immediate residents right on the adjacency, but also to the city in the form of the access point out to University that doesn't just serve this project. Mr. Switzenbaum is exactly right, it's great for this project, but it's also great for ensuring the developability of our neighbor when that does come along, that that can access University in a way that makes sense for everybody. With the multi-use paths connecting all the way through to the park system, all the way over to St. Mark's and all the development that you can get to there. So this is bringing to fruition the planning objectives and goals you guys have created through your careful, long-range planning over the years. With that, we are here to answer any questions and look forward to the discussion. Thank you.
Just one clarification. Did I understand that there are no three-bedroom units, is that what we said?
No three bedrooms.
Okay.
And I apologize, I wanted to answer your question about the TIA. So that is done. One of the benefits of having the master plan is that we know the full intensity that could be developed here. We can't exceed these numbers. So that allows us to go out and study the traffic in a specific way. So we do have pretty good knowledge what turn lanes are going to be required, how much queuing, that sort of thing. That's been reviewed in your engineering department. Ms. Lawson, of course, correctly has stated that we don't have final engineered drawings on that, but we have a very good idea, and that's what that TIA is used for. I'll also note that the driveway permit, that ultimately will be the deciding permit to give us these access points, has to go through NCDOT review and approval, and that's not a, that's not a back-and-forth, that's a you'll do this if you want your driveway. So we will be beholden to that, and that'll be the ultimate factor that decides.
Yeah, that's not a rubber stamp process.
It is not, you're right. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing, and public comment period is open. Is there anyone else on this side of the room that would like to speak on this item? Yes, ma'am. Please come forward and state your name and address for our city clerk. Welcome.
I'm Ron McAllister, I live on Williams Mill Road. I live at the dead end, at the end of Williams Mill Road, and I got involved in this project when I seen the zoning signs put up. So there was no, basically since it started, there's not been a whole lot of public involvement in our community. I went to the first zoning meeting, and of course, it was turned down, and there was very few community members there. So at that meeting, I requested to the developer, and Planning and Zoning knew about it, and it was in the minutes, that they would send out letters outside of the 300-foot request, and they said they would. I spoke to Sam outside after that, and with his attorney, and they said, they had my name and phone number, they would send notices out. Six months later, we never received anything. So at the next zoning meeting, I find out two days later that they had one, and they sent the notices out to the same group of people. So I was obviously upset about it because we have 70 homes sitting out in there, and they're well-insepted. And this is, you know, a huge development, the end of our road, plus you have Rural Retreat that enters into apartments at the end of that, and then you have the commercial development straight across from that intersection. So traffic is already difficult there. Now, if I'm correct, they said they're going to put, they said, how many units are going in?
270.
It was 400 and something at one time.
There's never 400.
330.
Either.
Well, either way, it's still going to be at least, if there's two cars per home, then that's 500 cars going onto Williams Mill Road. That's an enormous amount of traffic. So I urge you on this development, make sure that you... So I urge you on this development to make sure that you push to get this entrance off of University, because that will alleviate all the traffic that's going to congest in our neighborhood. And when I spoke to Sam about this, I also had another concern. When the city of Burlington put the water and sewer out, fall in for Waterford. That's at the end of Williams Mill Road at the other end. They dynamited at that time to put those sewer lines in. At the time, we didn't know they were doing that. And they damaged our foundations, our wells, because of the outfall line for the sewer line that goes down Williams Mill Road to the old home station. It contaminated all of our wells, and we all got extremely sick. We didn't know what was going on. So when we tried to figure out what was happening, we go back to the city to find out who the contractor was who was dynamiting, we had no recourse because we didn't know, you know, that's what they were doing at the time. We couldn't, you know, get a lawyer to fight for us, but because the developer said that, well, you've got to prove that they were dynamiting, and it was their fault. So anyways, we all got sick. We had extensive time trying to get our wells straightened around and foundations and UV lights, spent thousands of dollars. So what I'm urging you to do is make sure that this developer, if in case there's going to be dynamiting down there, that our community is well-aware of it because of the damage that dynamite can do. Even if you're under state and federal regulations, you still can damage property. So there needs to be some concessions with this developer to make sure that our wells are septic and home. And I don't know if he can do random water testings, notify us when they're going to dynamite, but it's a heavily rocked area, so I'm just really concerned about that if this project does go through.
Do we know? Thank you for your comments. Anyone else on this side would like to speak on this item? Is there anyone on this side that would like to speak on this item? Welcome this evening. Please state your name and address for our city clerk.
Good evening. I'm Kimberly Wood. I live at 4159 Shepherd Drive, Burlington. And if you'll permit me to step right over to the chart, I can show you exactly where my house is in relation to this proposed development. This is Rural Retreat that comes off of University right over here. Here's the Firestone and Waffle House. And then Williams Mill is only about, just right past that, those businesses. And about a tenth of a mile down, there's a circle, Horseshoe Shake. And I'm right up here, almost in that corner. So our property does back up to this development. And that neighborhood, we moved in that neighborhood in 1977, and our house was built in 1977. We moved to the neighborhood in 1998. And so that neighborhood has been there for a while, and ours was not the first house built out there. So it's an older, it's a quiet neighborhood, and it does dead-end, Rural Retreat dead-ends, and Williams Mill dead-ends, and then my road, Horseshoes on and off of Williams Mill. And so just to reiterate, I think my main concern, and I haven't really talked to a lot of the neighbors about it, is the entrance there right on Williams Mill? And I know with 275 apartment units, that's at least 275 cars coming in and out. So just to reiterate what some others have said, I surely hope that that entrance off of University Drive can be, you know, worked out sooner rather than later. So thank y'all for your consideration.
Thank you. These comments are a matter of our records, so our city clerk does get them in the minutes of this public hearing. Is there anyone else on this side that would like to speak on this item? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Deborah Jaggers. I'm at 412 Williams Mill Road. I'm right across the street from where this is going, on Williams Mill Road. The entrance end will not be very far from me. I said in the planning and zoning, it would be great if this would never happen, and our land across the street could stay the way it is. I know it's not going to happen. Been there since '85, been lucky. I want this to go in because I don't want 20 apartment buildings over there. And if this doesn't go in now, that's what I'm afraid is going to be over there down Rural Retreat, past my house, and I'm on the corner, so I get all the traffic, both ways. We've lived with it. We manage it. But I don't want another big group of apartment buildings going there. I think this is much better for our neighborhood. So I just had to speak and say that because it's not going to stay. So I think this is the better option. Thank you.
Anyone else on this side would like to speak on this item? Seeing that I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Have a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Our public hearing is closed. You know, a couple of comments that I have about this project that's important to me, and I'm very familiar with the area. First of all, my grandmother, until she died, she lived at the end of Williams Mill Road, Applebaker. So I'm very familiar. I grew up out there as a child, spent a lot of time out there, so I'm very familiar with this area and know it well. When we see projects like this, and it's one of the things that I asked Jamie to explain earlier in the other public hearing, is that this planned development, or this PD concept of what we have in our UDO, really allows us to get projects put forth that are digestible for the community because all vacant property will be developed at some point to some capacity. So it is, can we get it to the best it could possibly be, given the circumstances? And then we look at planning, and that's why Jamie showed the stubout to University that is indeed going to be part of this project, and as we develop the front piece of that property, that'll be worked into it. And a couple of those during public comments mentioned the need for that, and I think everybody would concur that that is the case, and that's what planning is for, and that's part of what our TRC, our Technical Review Committee, does. And then when you look at intents of uses, if you're talking about a multifamily area like this, that is, to use the term Mr. Switzenbaum said, adult-centric, it is going to be the least impactful, from my knowledge of 18 years sitting on this council and seven years on Traffic Commission prior to, not very impactful from a traffic perspective. It is going to be very much ebb and flow during the day as opposed to something that would be high retail or high impact, like a grocery store. Grocery store, you're going to fill it. But we've noticed with multifamily, and we see a lot of multifamily. We keep up with multifamily in our neighborhood, in our community, to know what percentage of our housing is multifamily. So short of Highland Elementary, I know of nowhere that we have significant traffic that is caused by multifamily. As a matter of fact, I would think that those at McIntosh would say that the school really is what causes the bottleneck a couple of times a day. But over two years, this project has been worked on, and a lot has gone into it. And I think it's important that you hear from everybody. That's what public hearings are for. But I think it's also important that we worked for two years to get a project like this to come forward that could potentially be the best potential use for this real estate. And I commend everyone for their efforts in doing that, as projects like this don't happen overnight. It takes a while for them to be, to come to fruition. Any other council comments or questions? Any? You guys? If not, our public hearing is closed. If we will entertain a motion on item number three, the requested planned development approval.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the request to rezonate property from medium-density residential to planned development. The property is located on the north side of Williams Mill Road and Rural Retreat Road, southwest of the intersection of Rural Retreat Road and University Drive, addressed as 3949 Rural Retreat Road, and consisting of Alimax County Tax Identification Number 106711, filed TRCPD 23-002. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan, and that the future land use map in Section 4, Land Use of a Comprehensive Plan, calls for this area to have suburban residential uses. Section 3, Livability Goal 1, Recommendation 3, calls to encourage a mix of housing options in all Burlington neighborhoods that support affordability, accessibility, and diversity. Section 5, Parks and Open Space, Goal 02, Recommendation 1, calls to continue to implement the 2012 Recreation and Parks Master Plan. This action is reasonable and in public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for the residential uses in the area. The request is compatible with existing zoning and land usage in the area. The development needs to purpose and intend of the planned development, different goals and objectives, through providing a high-quality and enhanced form of development.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve as consistent with the land use plan. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. This item is approved. Thank you for being here this evening. Yep, thanks, everyone, for being here. At this time, we will move to public comments. There are no public comments this evening. We'll move to city council comments. I do have a couple. One is, we have a parade Saturday, don't we?
Yes, sir.
Our Christmas parade will be Saturday at 10:00 a.m.
It starts at 10:00 a.m.
Starts at 10:00 a.m. We do anticipate that the city council will have a float present.
Well, and you'll have, I hope somebody told you, meet the city park, have a kids' street side, and you'll be taking downtown and get on the float.
We have clearance with PD to get through all of the roadblocks.
Can't wait to see if that happens.
You rest assured, I got my hands on this. So we look forward to that. And Tony, other events that we have?
We have Holiday Magic, and that's a Christmas event that'll be December the 13th, and that's downtown. Be a lot of activities, especially for children and families. And then the last one is our annual Christmas in the Park, which is December 22nd, when a lot of people are in town, see their family, grew up here, that it's a little nostalgic to come back to the park, ride the carousel, the train, and relive some of the younger days.
Okay. Well, thank you. We've got a lot of activities, so we hope to see everyone at the parade on Saturday. People always ask me, why does the city of Burlington have the Christmas parade before Thanksgiving? And I say, we just like to be first. So we look forward to that. We did, we were successful in our passing of our two bonds. They are certified.
Yes, sir.
So both sets of bonds passed. I think for all intents and purposes, two of the items in our Parks and Rec bond are pretty much shovel-ready, so we would anticipate getting up to speed at the work session.
Yes, sir. We'll have plans and timeframe, and when we're planning to sell the bond at the work session for your...
I might add, probably one of the fluid communities in our state, City of Cary, their rec apartments, bonds fail. Now, they're extremely expensive, but that was the one city, major city in North Carolina that I'm familiar with, where the municipal bonds did not pass. I think we've learned in this state that if you put a bond package together, you've got to make sure people understand it's for the public good, it's for everyone to use, whether it's roads, whether it's parks and recreation facilities. At some point in time, I would hope it would be for schools in our county, which is not our jurisdiction. But it certainly is a way to get some substantial infrastructure for the people who realize they want to live here, approved. And then it's our responsibility to figure out what to pay for it. That's another story. I get a lot of people involved in that at some point in time.
Well, we just approved a project, and we referred in the motion to the 2012 Recreation and Parks Master Plan, which specifically discussed Recreation Center in the western part of our community. So that goes back more than a decade of where that was recommended. So it's good to see that the community supported that, and certainly the project will be a wonderful addition to our city as we move forward with it as well. So that's all I have. Any other council comments?
Just a quick comment to Tony. Have we ever thought about extending the train tracks for the train at the park?
Yes, sir. That's one of the things we're looking at, and we have a city park master plan just for the city park, including the musical park, and that's one of the things we're going to look at, is making train track available, ride. A lot of here, but we're going to put in.
We got to stay below that 2%.
Yeah.
Right.
Somebody emailed me. Yeah. Climbing heels.
Someone emailed me that question, so...
Probably did that at Pullman Park. And it took a lot of effort, a lot of time, but it works. Same train.
So Beverly's light yelling and pointing and waving. We have two visitors with us this evening.
Oh, everybody.
Oh, everybody. I see the sweatshirt over there now, from Elon University. You guys are here for class or?
Yes, sir.
If you ever need to get out of jail free, we have two employees as council, and that would be one of them right there, and that's the other one. So if he ever gives you a hard time, you just let us know. Good enough.
There, good.
Thank you all for being here.
Have you learned anything from that?
Oh, yeah. A lot.
Well, good.
Sounds like a stretch.
A little bit, right? So that's where I know the one there.
So, thank you for being here. Any other council comments? Is there any? Okay. If not, we hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving. We won't be meeting until December, so at this time, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.